Thank you. Good evening, Wareham, and welcome to the Select Board Meeting of July eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. May I have a roll call, please, Ms. Words?
In attendance tonight is Mr. Alan Slaven, Ms. Judith Whiteside, Mr. Chad, Jared Chadwick, and Mr. Ron Bessie, along with Mr. Richard Bowen, our lawyer, and Mr. Derek Sullivan, our administrator, and myself, Tricia Words.
Thank you. Tricia, when was the last time you said the pledge of allegiance?
Well, it's been a while.
Okay, how about it?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in for liberty and justice for all. Amen. I guess there's no amen to the end of it.
No.
Correct. Okay. On the agenda, we have residents' comments, and I'm going to make a couple of comments before I read what it is. Please understand that our selectmen meetings are meetings held in public. They are not public meetings unless we have a hearing scheduled as we do this evening. During a hearing, the public will be asked to contribute their thoughts or their comments or questions. However, at no other time is the meeting open to the public. You may certainly watch, but that's the way it is. So for residents' comments, I want to read into the record how we are going to be running residents' comments. Comments on non-agenda items shall be limited to two minutes, and there will be no more than a total of ten minutes per meeting. Based on past practice, as well as to avoid violation of the open meeting law, the Select Board will not respond or comment. Okay? So if there is somebody in the audience who would like to speak to the Select Board, please raise your hand. And Ms. Noah, would you let Mrs. Sandy Slaven in, please? Alan, you probably should mute yourself because you're going to be groaning.
I'll be in trouble no matter what happens.
Where did she go? There she is.
Would you like me to let in this player person as well?
Not yet. Thank you. Ms. Slaven, you?
Yes, I do. Thank you very much for including me.
Would you address, would you identify yourself for the record, please?
Sandy Slaven. I would like to let people know there is something called a guide to outdoor recreation in Wareham. And it has been placed on the town website under the Open Space webpage. It is a delightful, very complete document by Linda Shafton, Peter Gold, of all the things that are able to be done in the town of Wareham at open recreation. I do recommend someone go in and take a look at it. It is an unbelievable document. I sent it to the Selectmen. I'm trying to find ways of expanding it to let more people in Wareham know it exists. Anything you want to do in the open, outside, it's included in this unbelievable document. So the link is on the Open Space webpage and under Discover Wareham on the town webpage. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Slaven. Now, where you can remove her. Claire, would you let Claire into the meeting, please? And Claire, because we can't see your last name, you're going to have to identify yourself for the record before you start speaking, please. Noah, I'm waiting for Claire to be let in as a panelist. Claire, would you identify yourself for the record, and I remind you that you have two minutes to speak? And nothing on the agenda. Please do not address anything on the agenda. Thank you. I need to know your last name. We can't hear you or see you, Claire.
Wrong. Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, what is your name, please?
It's Claire Tenaglia.
No, you may not speak to this board, Mr. Hayes. Mr. Sullivan, remove her from the audience, please, from the participants. Thank you. Again, you may speak to something that is not on the on the agenda. You may not speak to something that is on the agenda. Noah, would you let Annie Hayes in, please? Good evening, Ms. Hayes. Could you, I don't know if you can get your video going, but would you identify yourself for the record, please?
Annie Hayes, Farmers Lane. No, my video isn't working.
Okay.
Good evening, all. I have been to several meetings where residents seem to be uninformed about information about the redevelopment of the Wareham Village. And so when I came across the Wareham Redevelopment Authority Agenda for this coming Thursday, July thirteenth, Room twenty-seven in the Town Hall, I wanted to let people know of that and read a couple of the items because there is going to be a good discussion on issues involving what's called the WV one R, which is the Wareham Village redevelopment, sorry, district. So a couple of items. Update on coastal.
Ms. Hayes, I remind you, you have two minutes, and you've already used up one. Sorry.
Yeah, easy. Thank you.
Yeah.
Update on coastal zone management, resilient Main Street grant application, update on evolving design and performance guidelines for WV one R sub-district, update on impact on WV one R creation and rezoning on real estate, commerce, and housing within the new sub-district, discussion and possible vote on additional rezoning initiatives, air rights over Merchant's Way, and other potential recommendations to the planning board. Select Board Town Meeting, done.
Thank you, Ms. Hayes.
You're welcome.
Did a nice job of the two-minute warning. Thanks so much. Nice to see you.
You're strict.
Not see you, but hear from you.
All right.
Is there anyone else who would like to address this board on an item that is not on the agenda? I don't see any other hands raised. Ms. Words, could you double-check that for me? I don't, or Mr. Chadwick or Mr. Bessie? I don't see any other hands.
No, there's no more hands.
Excellent. Okay, I'll go to announcements then, Mr. Slaven. How about you first? You're muted, sir.
All right. Parkwood Association has their one-hundredth anniversary parade this coming Saturday. The weather's a little iffy. I'm hoping that we don't get rain. There'll be a parade of a bunch of antique cars and floats and different people. There'll be food, et cetera, for the residents of Parkwood as well. Also, Wareham Community Associates is having their annual lobster bake.
Hang on a second, Mr. Slaven. Ms. Hayes, please mute yourself. Thank you. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
It's okay. Wareham Community Associates is having their annual lobster bake. The money's raised. All goes to the students in the Wareham High School for scholarships. The event will be a week from this Wednesday. It will be at Zeko Marina. Tickets are available through Legacy Insurance on Main Street for those who would like to attend. It's a good time. The food is excellent. If you've never had a real true lobster bake with the steamers, et cetera, have that smoke flavor, this is your chance to do that. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Chadwick.
One thing I have is for any parents watching, fall sports signups are in full swing, and I know most of them close in about a month. So if you haven't done so, visit all the Facebook pages and webpages and sign up.
Thank you. Mr. Bessie.
I just want tonight. So this Saturday from eleven to, let me just double-check my times here. From eleven to three, D and J Enterprises, now located on Charge Pond Road, will be having their first annual touch-a-truck event. It's going to be from eleven to three. You're going to have lots of different trucks, emergency vehicles, games, face painting raffles, food trucks, and all the money raised is going to be donated to Turning Point. So if you don't have anything on your agenda this weekend, I highly encourage you to go by and support this cause. It's good to see a business in town taking some, taking some time to raise some money for an organization that does a lot of good work. So if you're available, eleven to three, the address is eight Charge Pond Road. As soon as you hit Charge Pond Road, it's right on the left-hand side, a beautiful, big, nice building that they just completed. So if you have the time, go. It's going to be a good event, and I think it's something they plan on doing years forward. So go if you have a chance.
Thank you. Ms. Words, announcements?
Yes. Last night, I went to the Wareham Library and saw a duo music pair, and they sang wonderful folk music. Their name was Hungry Town. The reason I bring it up is our library has a tremendous event calendar with multiple things happening in person, for children, for adults on Zoom. Tomorrow night, Peter Mendel, who is a travel writer, he's presenting at seven o'clock at the library, and I would encourage everyone to take a look at those front, that front page on their website and find some things that will interest you. I'm sure there's at least several there.
Excellent. Thank you. You actually stole my thunder. No, that's good. We have some other announcements. There is a, a lot, I am link to participate in the digital equity survey. There apparently is a QR code. I'm going to read you what I got from Mr. Buckland. Attached, please find a QR code to the online version of the digital equity survey. Please distribute this throughout the community and ask folks to respond. And here is a link that you can share, and I guess I could read it. I guess it's also going to be posted on the town and library websites. And there's a paper version of the survey in several languages to print out and distribute in places like Town Hall or the library where English might not be the first language. The digital equity survey is a survey that seeks to find what underserved communities in our community might be available or qualify for better digital service. I guess that's not a very good explanation, but that's really what it is. So it is on our website under the town and on the library website, and we hope that everyone does partake of the survey. Second announcement is that Wareham Gateman is actually one of the Cape's ten league, ten teams in the Cape Cod Baseball League, which is known to be the premier summer baseball league in the country. July highlights tonight, their Wusok's Smiley is going to be making an appearance at Spillane Field. So we're not live. I mean, we're, we're not in the Town Hall or in the multi-service center, but we would be competing with Smiley. On the twentieth, the Gatemen are going to be playing at Mass Maritime at their field there. That actually is going to be a game sponsored by the Cape Cod Railroad. On July thirtieth, it's a first responders' night, and District Attorney Timothy Cruz is sponsoring and honoring the first responders from all of our local areas. And I think that would be a great game to attend. And on July thirty-first, the Gatemen take on Polar Park. So they go to the home of the Worcester Red Sox for their game. Attendance is free. And the unbelievable news that came out yesterday, I guess, was that the number-one draft pick for MLB played in Wareham in two thousand twenty-one. So if you want to see good baseball, I advise you or I really suggest that you go bring your bug spray because the little midgies are all over the field, but it is great baseball. We have in about one minute a public hearing. So now I'm going to ask that you let in Mr. David Barry, Mr. John Iata. If you are here for the petitioner, Mr. Barry, please raise your hand. Mr. Barry, raise your hand. Mr. Iata, please raise your hand. And if you have someone else with you, Mr. Barry or Mr. Iata, that would be great. And I apologize. I'm not really sure I know how to pronounce your name, Mr. Iata. Hey.
Yep, you got it. You got it. Great.
Oh, okay. Thank you. We won't be able to start the hearing for another minute. Oh, I guess it's seven fifteen. Mr. Barry, are you able to use your videos as well? Ms. Words, okay, great. Ms. Words, I'm going to ask you to call for the opening of the hearing, please. Motion to move.
I make, I make a motion to open the hearing for the transfer of Common Victular's alcoholic beverages license, A B C C number zero, 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 one, one, dash, R S, dash, thirteen, twenty-eight, and alteration of premises from Lindsay's Inc., DBA Lindsay's, to V and B Restaurants, Inc., DBA Town Tavern and Tap, thirty-one, thirty-eight Cranberry Highway, Wareham, Mass, under the provisions of Chapter one thirty-eight of the Massachusetts General Law for the year of two thousand twenty-three.
There's second to that motion to open the hearing.
Second.
Motion made in second to open the hearing. I'm going to go for a roll call vote, please. Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
My, Ms. Words?
Yes.
And myself. The hearing is open. I'm not sure, Mr. Barry, whether you or Mr. Iata are going to be making the presentation. Whichever one of you, please identify yourself for the record and then proceed.
Hey, thank you, Madam Chair. John Iata McDermott Quilton Miller, located at twenty-eight State Street in Boston. I'm here on behalf of the applicant V and B Restaurant, Inc., doing business as Town Tavern and Tap. Joining us is David Barry and his wife, Tori. Dave Barry is the sole officer, director, and shareholder of V and B Restaurants, Inc. He's also the proposed manager of record. As this board is very familiar, last year, Lindsay's closed. You had a hearing in December on that specific question as to the renewal of the liquor license. That was renewed for two thousand twenty-three and held in abeyance, as I understand it. So we are here this evening on a transfer of that liquor license. And on top of that, we are also requesting an alteration of premise, which I'll get into just in a moment. So just briefly, by way of background, Dave has been in the restaurant business for twenty-five years, over twenty-five years. He has been a past Director of Operations, a general manager, as well as an owner and operator of restaurants. He currently owns two other restaurants, both on the Town Tavern name. One is Town Tavern and Tap in North Attleboro, and the other is Town Tavern and Treehouse in Pembroke. So he is looking to bring that brand here to Wareham. During his ownership, he has had no history of any violations, whether it's as a general manager or as an owner. He has an exemplary record for the sale and service of alcohol. He's tip certified, and his intention is to have all the staff who's going to be handling and serving alcohol to be tip certified. He is excited to come here. Obviously, there are big shoes to fill at this location, but this is a big investment for, for Dave. He's purchasing the, the real estate as well as the, the assets at this location. The alteration that I spoke to, there are some minor cosmetic changes, some exterior and interior. Exterior, you're going to see new windows and some new trim. And inside, he intends to rework the seating plan so there's a better flow. He's going to be upgrading the bar area and updating the furniture and things like that. The one change you're going to see, which is kind of a from seasonal to what we're hoping to be a permanent basis, is the outdoor seating area. In the past, it's my understanding that Lindsay's did enjoy and have that ability to do so during the COVID protocols. And even though that has been extended by the governor through two thousand twenty-four, we would like to extend that on a permanent basis. And the A B C C has actually encouraged applicants to do so. So we are here as part of this transfer to also include that alteration. Other than that, I think you've heard enough from me. I'm sure you're interested to hear what Dave's going to do with the concept and the menu and things like that. And I'll turn it over to Dave now, and certainly if you have any follow-up questions for me on the application, I'd be more than happy to help you.
Thank you, Mr. Iata. Mr. Barry, welcome to Wareham.
How are you, folks? Thank you for taking the time.
Why don't you just let us know what your ideas are and your proposals?
Absolutely. So this is my wife, Tori, and Tori and I are a family-run operation. We've had a couple of Town Tavern locations for the last few years. The opportunity for Lindsay's came about, and it was being such a staple in the community of Wareham for seventy-four-plus years, or seventy-four years, and being a family-operated location, I thought it was kind of a no-brainer when we looked at the facility to try and carry on the tradition of being a family-run operation. We have two young children and one on the way. So something that we can always pride ourselves on is, you know, having that family atmosphere to kind of engulf ourselves in the community like we do in our other venues in North Attleboro, Pembroke. That location, just when I looked at it, I liked the area about it, the investment of the, the roads and just everything that was going on in that area definitely intrigued us. And we're just looking to plant our roots there and become a good supporter and contributor to the community as a whole.
And Dave, just briefly, I know you do get immersed in the, in the local communities and your other locations. Not to put you on the spot, but I think you intend to do the same and become an active member of the community, business owner.
Yeah, if you go to North Attleboro or even in Pembroke, the Little League fields, the baseball fields, some of the football fields, you'll see the Town Tavern logo on all the fields, the uniform shirts. Some of the teams are named after Town Tavern. We host a lot of the community events back at, at the locations at both North Attleboro and Pembroke. We also run fundraising events every Mondays. Once we get situated where my wife and I will donate back a percentage of food sales back to whatever charity or community organization that's actually implementing the fundraiser. So, yeah, we definitely have a great involvement with the communities that we're in especially.
And David will also attest to the fact, this is a great opportunity for additional jobs. Want to keep this business going. And I think it was, it was obviously an expectation and now a reality that this location continue on as a restaurant, which is probably, I think everyone can agree, the best use of this location is certainly what people are used to. And I think this is a great opportunity to continue on and start a new legacy at this location.
Thank you. Do any of my board members have questions of Mr. Barry or Mr. Iata? Mr. Chadwick, please.
First, I just want to thank you for all that you do for the kids there and definitely looking forward to it here. Understand you guys are just starting out, but you guys will get a whole bunch of teams coming after you. So just expect that. And the other thing I noted is, I'm looking, I've been looking at your menu here, and lobster, mac and cheese is my most favorite thing in the world. So I'm happy to see that you have that. And on me on opening night, at least getting three of those.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Bessie. Oh, are you on set, Mr. Chadwick?
I'm, I'm good.
Yeah, Mr. Bessie.
Still looking at the menu.
He took, he took up enough time with the three lobster, mac and cheese comment. And he definitely will. I'll attest to that. I've seen the man eat. So first off, you know, welcome to Wareham. Just a couple of questions. I've kind of just, you know, done a little research and seen some of the things that, you know, your organization has done for other towns that you are, you know, currently doing business in. One of the biggest questions I have is I know that, you know, from, from your comments, that you are very, you're very hands-on. You know, I guess my biggest question would be is how, how do you plan on dividing your time to be able to continue doing what you're doing with your other locations, but also being able to do that in, in Wareham? I know it's, it's difficult. You know, I spent, you know, seventeen years in the restaurant industry, and I know how stressful it can be just, you know, working in one, you know, but running, you know, multiple. How do you, how do you plan on trying to balance your time to give the same commitment to all of your locations to keep yourself doing the same that you've been doing?
Absolutely. It's a great question. Number one was investing in the right people that I have that work alongside me. That's my first, been my first thing since day one. I have a lot of team members that have worked with me for many, many years that I've kept alongside me throughout it. When I opened the North Attleboro store a few years ago, I spent about a year and a half onsite every single day, building the brand, introducing myself to the community, making sure that, you know, every little detail of that restaurant was operated successfully. After a year and a half was when we proceeded on opening our Pembroke location, which has just surpassed a year's opening as of right now. And for the most part, I've spent about ninety-five to ninety-six percent of my time in Pembroke. Most of the time, you know, consistently same scenario as I did when I built North Attleboro, making sure the staff was trained appropriately, the introduction to the community, meeting and greeting a lot of the faces that came through the door, just to keep the consistency of the brand. And I intend to do the same thing in Wareham. To, for the next, a minimum for the next year, my wife and I will both be involved heavily at all times. Obviously, I still, I only live in Halifax, but my front door to there, obviously with zero Cape traffic, is twenty-nine minutes door-to-door, so it's not a very long drive by any means. So it's not like it's outside the box and commute in, in the drive, driving to there. So I'll definitely be very much hands-on and pretty much there every single day. You'll see my face in that building, at least for the first year, every single day that I need to. I mean, the restaurant business is not easy by any means, and it's not cut off a very many people, but I've been doing it since I was a kid and consistently doing it. And it's just something that my wife and I have adopted to deal with and, and work with as our, as our future.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Bessie?
No, that's it.
Okay, thanks. Ms. Words? You muted, Ms. Words.
I just have a couple of comments. The first is for Mr. Iata. Sir, this is one of the best packages I've ever seen put together. So thank you very much. It made it very easy to understand what Mr. Barry and his organization were going to do. There's really not much missing. Mr. Barry, when I looked, one question I had is, oh, there's only one core license there, and you answered that today before you, I think in your second sentence. I looked at your floor layout, and so Lindsay's has, was always a family restaurant, and they really got that, made that feeling stick through the use of booths and, and four-top tables. So when I looked at your layout, it was very interesting to see that you had kept a big part of that and then put the, the modern layout also in there, and I really like what you're doing. So welcome, and thank you to both of you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Ms. Words. Mr. Sullivan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Personally, I've been to the Robert Toner site a few times. It's a family, really great atmosphere, nice organization. I can attest, I think we actually won a PTO gift basket with one of their gift cards in it. So you see them around the, the community. And yeah, Jared, you won't be disappointed. I think the only way it could have gotten better is if you were able to get Lindsay's seafood chowder recipe.
The lucky part about it is, is obviously, you know, Lindsay's was a staple in that community, and the way that something like that organization and some of the other ones, you know, the Red Coach Grill, Red Coach Grills of the world, you can't operate like you could many years ago just because of inventory costs and everything else. So our menu has definitely slimmed down a lot, but it's such a variety of great, great quality items. We are going to increase our tap, our Wareham Locations menu a little bit more from a seafood flair. But as far as the seafood bisque, Sherry and I have discussed it, and I told her that I would give her the credit on the, on the menu itself. And I'm pretty sure that we're about a hundred percent that we're going to have their seafood bisque.
That's amazing. Great job. I know people will be ecstatic.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, we want to add our flair to things. Everybody keeps raving about, I've never tried it, nor would I, but seafood, they keep raving about the seafood bisque and the corn chowder, I believe it was, that they raved about. Obviously, sometimes chefs, they want to get their own versions of things on there and don't want to take somebody else's ingredients, but he was willing to, to work with getting the seafood bisque and working with putting that together. But one of the big staples we're going to put on, because it's going to be probably a September-ish opening, hoping, is a nice. um, is a nice butternut bisque that we're going to have on there for the fall, a nice fall classic dish that we'll put our little twist on.
Excellent. Well, thank you. And yeah, there the outdoor spots always well attended. I've never heard a whiff of uh, trouble. So I was really excited when I heard you were you were interested. So.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Mr. Bowen, you had your hand up and then you took it down. Do you? Are you all set or do you want? You're all set. Okay, thank you. Um, Mr. Barry or Mr. Iade, I had a just one question. First of all, I want to echo what Ms. Wort said. Thank you because that package was complete. We didn't have to ask any questions. We didn't have to chase you for any paperwork. Um, so that the record will show you have returned all of the green cards, which were notifications to the abutters of the um, request for the transfer of the license. And that was, they were delivered to us on Monday and we got another slew this morning. So thank you very much for everything for a complete package. Um, one question. There in the packet, um, there's a public amusement, a public amusement license. Do you need that? Because I'm not, I don't have that on the agenda.
Um, so I know we did submit the entertainment application. I think public amusement would be separate from that, but um, my understanding, and you can correct me, I know we did submit the entertainment. Uh, does that require, and I know it's not, it doesn't require public hearing, I don't believe.
No, it doesn't. I just need to.
But with the public amusement, uh, Dave, do you know what that might have been referring to? Was it the uh, do you consider that to be like the jukebox? I don't know what the board considers the, I mean, I I think it's usually like video games or um.
Well, I can read you what.
Okay.
Um, we have arcade automatic devices, you know, billiard pool tables, um, live entertainment would be, you know, a singer or a, you know, comic or something like that. Um, there's a difference between a public entertainment during the week as well as on Sundays. Um, and then obviously we're not talking about water slides, bumper boats or mini golf, but um.
So I could clarify that if that is kind of all inclusive for the entertainment. I know um, we're, I don't think we're looking to uh, and have a request for anything other than what Lindsay's had prior. Um, but but Dave would like, obviously, the ability to have certain bands and vocalists, I think with that um, would be the possibility of a DJ, karaoke, jukebox, I'm just going by memory here of what the entertainment, let me see what else I might have um. And I think. Yeah.
That will have to be a separate um, application when you are closer to that because um, we we look at the hours that you would want to be doing that. Um, and also, you know, is it live music? Is it, you know, that kind of thing?
And sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. So that was submitted along with the other applications at the same time through the online portal. So that's the only thing is I don't know how it transferred into what you might have or what packet you might have for this evening.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have that. So what I will do is I'll double check all of our paperwork and if we haven't, I it's it's not listed on the agenda as as getting a public amusement license. So I'm going to have to put it back on an agenda. I can do that next week. And if you can just let us know, it would be, you know, karaoke or.
Yeah, it should. And I think it's all there and it did submit. I did check um, the application through David's account. Um, just recently, and I think it did identify all those and included the hours of operation. So I believe it's it is there. I can try to see if uh,
Okay.
maybe we can print that out. Um, and obviously, you know, I think as Dave alluded to, you know, we're looking for a fall opening ideally. We don't have to rush back. Um, I'm sure Dave may be able to handle that on his own to kind of help him out here. Um, but but we can certainly work with you, um, Madam Chair and and figure out what the best approaches. I was actually going to raise that because I did not see it on the agenda and I figured it might just be a uh, uh, something you took up administratively and not necessarily needed the uh, the actual vote on it. So.
Thank you. Mr. Bowen? Do you want to weigh in on this one?
Sure, Madam Chairman. Are we talking just the automatic amusement license or are we also talking entertainment?
I believe we're talking entertainment if he wants to do karaoke.
Yeah, our my biggest thing that I was looking for, and I know that we had that written down on the application was um, what we do at our other facilities is like a one piece acoustic entertainment dinner background music, that type of thing, you know. I have a couple of groups of individuals that travel all around Mass that I know, just a nice, nice ambiance, nice conversational piece behind having them entertain. That's mainly what we're looking for. I mean, we do have uh, a jukebox that has the background music of things that we have in our other facilities, whether it works or not, we have that there. Um, then we have other other ways of pro- uh, producing our sound that we have within the restaurant. Um, some other offerings that we wrote down on the application was if we ever wanted to host a karaoke night or something like that, I'm not saying we going to, I just was having the had the opportunity when we filled it out that that's what we've put on there if we ever wanted.
Yeah, I'm looking, Mr. Iade, I'm looking at the transmitter letter that you sent us on, that we received on June fourteenth and it does not list a um, request for the automatic, for the amusement license. So I'm going to have to put it back on the agenda, but.
That's fine. I, yeah, and I think for the amusement, I think I just wasn't sure of clarification. Clearly entertainment where there's no doubt, we would need that. Um.
Right, and I think uh, we, our application was through our viewpoint system and because we've had office turnover, I apologize, it may have gotten lost in the switch, but we'll put it back on the agenda for next week. If you could just send me some information tomorrow or the next day about exactly what it is and what hours you would be operating as well.
And just for clarification and maybe to uh, educate me, so the is it's not automatic amusement me, because I hear of automatic amusement devices like.
Yeah, no, it's.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's amusement.
Amusement, okay.
Yeah.
And so adding minimum, you know that karaoke would be one of those items.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, and your license for keynote comes from the state, so that isn't, that's not an issue.
That's separate, yeah, okay.
Again, I apologize for any confusion.
No, I know we have to work, we have to work within the portal, so I think uh, we do.
Yeah, I think, again, I think it just happened to be that you were um, caught between our turnover.
Yeah, no worries.
Thanks. Ms. Words?
Yes, I just have one more thing. When you're talking about live entertainment and music, are you talking about having it externally as well as internally?
Um, if.
There'd be a difference.
Okay. Um, if allowed, obviously with the patio that's there, if there was ever the opportunity of having, we're not talking full piece bands or anything of obnoxious, you know, loud music like a at a concert, we're just talking some background singing. I think you may have referenced it at the uh, the community event that you referenced with the singers that were earlier in the in the meeting. That's what we're looking for, just uh, something like that, definitely interior. You know, maybe in the lounge area while people are having dinner, six to nine PM on a Friday. Um, if we had the opportunity outside in the patio area, if that was open to do so, if that's a separate license, I know in my other two communities, it's not a separate license, so it's new to me if that is uh, and needed uh, something different in Wareham to have that vocalist maybe outside.
Yeah, no, it's not a separate license. We just need to be specific about exactly what we are licensing as well as the hours.
Absolutely.
Okay, and Mr. Iade, if you could just um, get in touch with the office tomorrow, that would be helpful and we'll just finish up getting it on next week's agenda.
Sounds good.
Any other questions or comment? Yes, Miss Slaven?
I think you missed me.
No, you didn't have your hand up. Everybody else had their hand up. Wait, I mean, the what, the yellow hand?
Uh, my hand, I have a black hand, not a yellow.
Yeah, I got that part.
Uh, one thing, I thought we, there was a change in the insurance, you know, I think the drop, I thought the local license insurance, the total was supposed to be one million dollars.
Correct.
Not five hundred thousand. You need to correct that. Also, when you started to talk about outside, we've got some serious issues with outside entertainment. Uh, your particular location has a lot of residential housing right behind it, as you know. So if you plan to do anything outside, you're going to have to design it so basically the sound travels to the street of those Route six and twenty eight, because the last thing we want to have to deal with is about a hundred residents coming in and yelling at us because they can't sleep at night.
Yeah, absolutely. And I I one hundred percent attest to that. I have a similar scenario in Pembroke where literally my Pembroke community uh, location the butters on left and right and across. We do it thankfully enough earlier in the night. Like I said, it's more of that five to eight, six to nine. And I definitely agree, if anything, it would be done so that the performers are on the backside of the building shooting towards uh, Route six. Definitely.
And my other comment is I've spent some time looking through and the operation of both locations and they've got really a a really strong representation and reputation all over the area they're both in, so happy to see them come.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you. I'm now going to ask if anybody in the audience would like to speak on behalf of the application or against the application, please raise your hand. Ms. Words and Mr. Chadwick, would you check to make sure I'm missing nobody? I see no one.
No, no hands.
Okay, thank you.
I don't see any.
I don't see any either. All right, I'm going to, do any of you have any further questions or comments? No, I just want to say thank you for choosing to to do business in Wareham. We very much appreciate it. Ms. Words, I'll accept a motion to close the hearing, please.
I make a motion that we close the hearing on a common vic victual, victualis, excuse me, I will never get that word. All alcoholic beverages licensed and alteration of premises from Lindsay's Inc. DBA to V V M D Restaurants Inc. DBA Town Tavern and Tap as um, in according with um, Mass Law Chapter one thirty eight for the year of twenty twenty three.
There's a second to the motion to close it. Motion made and seconded to close the hearing. I'm going to go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Ms. Words?
Yes.
Myself, yes, the hearing is now closed. Ms. Words, I'll accept a motion.
I make a motion that we open a discussion and take a book vote to grant Town Tavern and Tap the transfer of common victualis, all alcohol beverages license number zero 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 one one RS thirteen twenty eight.
Your motion is to grant, to grant the license?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to grant the license as required, where requested. Any further discussion on the motion?
Just a quick question.
Yep.
What's the capacity going to be with the restaurant with the changes?
They have sprinklers.
I know they do, just curious.
Um, it is on the Mr. Barry or Mr. Iade, can you tell me what the?
Sure. Um, so we are proposing three hundred and twenty five seats inside, outside would be sixty six seats, um, as shown on the plan.
And it is sprinkled.
Yes, I know.
Okay. Any further questions on the motion to grant? Here, no, no, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
They have lobster, mac and cheese, so yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Ms. Words?
Yes.
And myself, yes. I have to say, you couldn't make me eat lobster, mac and cheese. Way Jose. All right, thank you. We will hear from you tomorrow. And again, um, Mr. Iade, we'll just smooth out some of the questions that we have and some of the yeah, okay.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Appreciate your.
Thank you, folks.
And choosing to do business with us.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Good evening. Thank you.
Take care.
Mr. Sullivan, Noah, would you please let in Mr. Pigeon? Would you raise your hand? Mark Drainville, raise your hand. Sarah Greenberg, raise your hand. Cleecamp, are you here? I don't see you. Is Mr. Cleecamp joining us this evening? I don't see him. Do you see him, anybody? Mr. Pigeon, are we expecting anybody other than Drainville and Greenberg, or can any one of you answer that question for me? All right, Ms. Greenberg, are you going to, or is Mr. Cleecamp joining us?
I don't believe so.
Not, he's not.
Not, okay, thank you very much. All right. Um, there are in the audience two other members of the, three other members of the sewer commissioners. This is not a public hearing. It has not been posted as their meeting. And so Mr. Pigeon and one member of his committee could join this meeting if Mr. Pigeon, if you want one of the others, Mr. Scanlon, Ms. Slaven, Mr. Gibberdy are here. If you wanted one of them to join us, please let me know. Other than that, they won't be.
Uh, Mrs. Gibberdy, please.
Mr. Gibberdy, please raise your hand. Mr. Gibberdy? Um, Noah, would you let Mr. Gibberdy in, please? James Gibberdy, G I, thank you so much.
He was involved in a lot of the background, so he could be an asset.
Okay, Mr. Pigeon, um, would you identify yourself and the individuals who are going to be speaking on the articles? There are five articles on a special town meeting warrant, and I understand that you're here to explain and uh, answer questions from this board so that we can choose to make a recommendation to our town meeting.
Yes, thank you and good evening, Madam Chairman. Our purpose this evening is a series of five articles as you've indicated and they're all relevant to the Wareham pollution can uh, control facility. The initial one is an article one and it covers the facility itself. And I might back up a minute if you don't mind, just to get everybody an idea of just what size of an operation we have going on over there. And we had about nine, ninety miles of sewer mains. Some six to seven thousand users, forty five pump stations and a major facility on Tony Lane. The facility itself was built in about nineteen seventies, came online in seventy eight, had a major upgrade in two thousand and five. And now everything is reaching its anticipated life expectancy of approximately twenty five years. And as we were beginning to do now, because some of the the mechanics are not operating at full efficiency and are impacting the ability of the plant to accomplish its processing. First one on article one is the construction for replacement of the headworks and the clarifiers. This uh, is one, the headworks go through the process of extracting things we shouldn't have in the uh, flow and the clarifiers uh, go through the process of preparing it to become sludge and water. Um, our our consultants, GHG, whom you introduced earlier, Mark Drainville and Sarah Greenberg, will have a presentation or have a presentation that'll go through the more detailed process of uh, the clarifiers and the headworks and also the funding for it. So I'll turn it over to Mark and uh, Sarah.
Yep, thank you. Mr. Pigeon, do you have a video feed or not?
I I don't understand why I don't. I've always had it.
Okay, that's okay. I, that's fine. You've identified yourself. Mr. Drainville or Ms. Greenberg, which one of you is going to go first?
Sarah will.
I I I will be, yes. Um, hopefully everybody can um, see the screen. Um, wonderful. Thank you, uh, Mr. Pigeon and um, the select board. We wanted to come here to discuss the article for um, special town uh, meeting upcoming, but I believe it's the first article. Uh, the headworks and clarifier upgrade projects, we came before the select board a year ago, almost tomorrow, actually to present.
Greenberg, one second. Somebody has a mic on and there's a terrible feedback. So could you all, if you're not speaking, kill your mics so that we don't have that problem? I'm sorry, Ms. Greenberg, I just want to make sure the audience at home can hear.
Thank you. Wonderful, thank you. Um, uh, where we spoke a um, a year ago tomorrow um, to speak about the upcoming project to have a submission for um, state funding and the and so this is now the next stage in order to present more details for the upcoming um, warrant for um, authorization, requesting authorization to borrow. And so this project involves um, it's uh, the first component is upgrade of the headworks. So as Mr. Pigeon mentioned, the uh, water pollution control facility um, takes in all of the sewer and wastewater from um, the sewer components of the community and the first stage of treatment at the facility is is called, is what we call headworks. Um, in it, um, are is equipment for removing um, rags and and materials of such nature as well as a grit, sand and grit. And that's the first stage of treatment at this process. And these, and the equipment and the building and um, in is um, has been in, has been in operation for um, many years and the equipment is corroded um, and and starting to break and fall apart and starting to fail, which is, which can cause um, pieces of the equipment to no longer work um, very well. These were, um, the construction for this process was completed in um, two thousand and five. So we're looking at almost twenty years here. And when when the equipment, such as the devices that remove rags are no longer working, it can allow rags downstream to other equipment and cause problems. Similar with the grit, if the sand and grit isn't removed, and that can travel to other processes later on in the process, in the process, that can cause other issues. Just wanted to illustrate, give everybody a visual for some of these items we're discussing. On the, in the left photo, you can see that grit and some raggy material and fibrous material have made it to the, one of the further stages of treatment, the secondary treatment process, and this shows when a tank was recently taken down for maintenance and cleaning, and you can see that it's built up. The, what you see as, as discs at the bottom of the tank, actually, they look like speaker discs, if you will. They provide air, air comes up through those discs, and that aerates the process, which is critical to functioning of that treatment process. And settling of grit and rags can hamper and impede that process. And on the right-hand side in the photo, you can see that fibrous materials have collected within the mechanisms of the secondary clarifier, which is a further downstream, causing a lot of clogging and maintenance issues. And this, these are, these are, these, this is a equip, this is ragging and screenings that have made it past the headworks a lot due to the age and the equipment being, starting to fail. So the first, that was the first piece of this project. The second piece is the upgrade of the secondary clarifiers. So headworks is the beginning that removes all of our stringy materials and our sand and our grit. Then it moves into the secondary treatment process where the second stage of that allows for wa- water to settle wastewater to settle, and you have a depth that allows for settling. The general concept is if you have water with with, you know, pieces in it, whether it's rock or what have you, not at this stage, but just to give you a visual, you have the heavier pieces falling to the bottom, also called our sludge, and that gets removed so that the liquid material, the liquid is staying within the upper zones and gets removed. And so the challenge at this stage of the treatment process is that the clarifiers are failing and beyond their useful life, as well as the tank itself is not deep enough. Previous designs, design standards always are updated, and and so updated design standards currently indicate a deeper tank for proper settling of your, of your larger particles. So this photo just shows a visual to give everybody a visual, what of, you know, what does a secondary clarifier look like? And you can see that on the right-hand side, you see a lot of buildup of scum and and floatable solids at the surface. On the left-hand side, you see a clarifier that's clear. The intent of a clarifier is to have the solids at the bottom settle to the bottom and be pulled out. And you want the clear liquid to travel over these. You'll see that they are, these are called V-notch weers. They are these little metal components that are around the outside. That is where the water flows out to continue down to the rest of the process for treatment through disinfection to then be put back into the river. And we just provided these slides just to help with a visual. As I'm describing these, you have the clarifier, the secondary clarifier where you have as it causes influence zone where the water is coming in from a previous stage, and you're allowing here a zone for settling. So all of those solids are settling to the bottom, and then they are being pulled out depending on the mechanism pulled out from the bottom for the heavy sludge or flows over, and then the clear liquid should flow over. We just wanted to provide that as a little background. We can make this available to to the group as well as the town. But those are the, that's the meat of the process and the project and why, why we need these upgrades and why this, why we are here for the next for the warrant article going for authorization to borrow. So this slide shows an order of magnitude costs for the Headworks and Clarifier Upgrade Project. This is, as I mentioned earlier, the this was proposed, and this process has gone through the state revolving fund application just to apply for could the town receive funding, loan funding for this project? And so this is the value that was put in to that project for that loan application at the time. And we, we talk about order of magnitude cost just to give a, to give a budgetary number that was based on an evaluation and is the first step in establishing construction costs. So as we are currently in the design phase and moving towards final design, that we will be moving towards a final cost, but we must hold that order of magnitude cost as per the application up until final design. And the, the costs are, are not insignificant. They're thirty-six million is a large sum and to to bring, to sort of discuss why some of these costs maybe may seem large, et cetera. Of course, we all know and are aware of the material cost increases we experienced between twenty twenty and twenty twenty-two. But just for a visual, we are showing here increase in various fuels or products, so diesel and gasoline. You can see an increase in these fuel, in these fuel prices, fifty to ninety-three percent. Cement and steel, especially steel, up to eighty-three percent. And this comes from the Massachusetts Department of Transportation Highway Division, as well as the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics respectively for these, just to give an idea and remind us all of the increase in costs that we are experiencing for, for construction for these projects. And we, we've seen this in similar municipal projects that have been bid in the past year or a year ago, rather. You can see here that the two, two for, two treatment facility projects, upgrades or new facilities, you can see that the low bid was thirty-eight percent higher or and seventy-six percent higher respectively than the pre-estimate in a sort of, in a, in a keeping and in accordance with these material cost increases we're seeing and the changing bidding climate for these kinds of municipal construction projects. But so we have submitted for, so funding, let's talk funding. We have submitted the, through the beginnings of the, of the state revolving fund, which is a low-interest loan program offered through the state, zero to two percent loan, zero to two percent interest, apologies. And that first stage was to submit an application to the state to say, to request we be on a list, that the, that this project be on a list for funding in the coming years, and they, and the town, this project and the town of Wareham was listed on that, on that list that came out and funding. So the state revolving loan fund has not only low interest, zero to two percent, but offers principal forgiveness on its loan and for tier, for tier communities in Massachusetts. And those, and those are statewide tiered depending on economics of the, of the, of the towns and municipalities. And so Wareham happens to be a tier-three community. So a minimum nine point nine percent principal loan forgiveness is anticipated in conjunction with this loan. In addition, what makes this, the timing important and this a unique year is that the infrastructure bill that was, that came into effect has now added additional funding to the state revolving loan program. And the, and while, while the state hasn't identified an exact percentage of what, of how it will allocate the additional funds for all the projects, it has, it, it will provide additional loan forgiveness for, for all of these projects. So we see we have zero to two percent loan, which is low interest plus nine point nine percent principal forgiveness, plus some additional due to the nature of this extra infrastructure bill. In addition, the born intermunicipal agreement indicates that seventeen point one percent is contributed to, to projects for wastewater through the sewer, with the sewer department. So for the state revolving loan fund, that the town is aware that in order to get zero percent interest versus two, there are, these are, there are some requirements here. And the, the project primarily has to be nutrient removal and, and prevent nutrient enrichment of surface water bodies or water supplies. And, and there are some, and you can see two, three, and two, three, four, and five are some additional criteria that must be met, such as not being in violation currently to a T M D L standard or having a comprehensive management wastewater management plan, which is currently in process in conjunction. So that will be an important piece for, for this criteria listing. And the project has deemed consistent with regional water resources management plans as applicable, and the app, and the applicant has to adopt land use controls, which, which is worked through also in conjunction with the comprehensive wastewater management plan. And so the town is aware that these are the criteria to be met for the zero interest. However, either way, two interest and zero to two interest is still a low interest loan. So the goal is to achieve criteria to meet them and to achieve this. To talk about the funding a bit more, touched on the low-interest loan and the principal forgiveness. So we wanted to just show a visual of the cost of the loan from zero, depending on zero to two percent. The cost of the loan, you can see ranges from thirty-six million to forty-four, depending on the interest. But you can see how that is reduced greatly when you have a minimum principal forgiveness of nine point nine percent, which is anticipated with this loan. And, and you, and then we broke out for visual purposes, the seventeen point one percent of Born's contribution through the intermunicipal agreement. So you can see that right, and especially, this also doesn't show because we don't know the exact numbers right now, the additional principal forgiveness that is being provided for projects being funded through this year through the infrastructure bill that is allowing additional funding. So you can see that this thirty-six million dollar loan can be as cost-effective as twenty-six million dollars or less. And so this is a unique time with all of the funds available. And so in terms of paying for and, and, and work and how the loan is being worked for, the town is, will maximize the use of debt drop-off with the goal of fitting the cost within existing budget. And so that the proposed schedule, we wanted to put up here as well to remind everybody as this schedule is where, the project is beholden to the schedule due to the fact that this is the state revolving fund funding cycle schedule. So the project evaluation forms was that application. I mentioned the first stage of this application for the loan program was submitted. Design funds for designing the projects were, was approved in the fall town meeting, and the next stage is, is approving, is authorization to borrow for this project, which has been moved, which has been scheduled for July twenty-fourth, I believe, twenty twenty-three. And so these are critical dates as this, the town has been listed on the, on what they call the intended use plan. That is a list of projects that are funded through this program, are planned to be funded by the state and to be considered by financing. That's, as part of the project, the state has has indicated that funds must be appropriated by June thirtieth. However, we, the town has submitted an extension request to the state program for an extension request because, with the knowledge of this upcoming town meeting. And we of course, not proceed, the project itself costs money. There are potential costs of not proceeding with this project as well. If, if, if nutrient goals aren't met, there could be fines and put, placed on the, on the town and loss of eligibility, and of course, you lose eligibility for the zero percent financing moving forward. And of course, the wastewater projects are still going to have to be completed, you know, from, that comes down from the state. And, and then you could lose select access to certain grant fundings. And of course, as we all, we've all, we're all aware with having had sewer moratoriums, we, you know, to have growth, we want to have sewer connections and be able to continue to bring in residences and businesses. So the next step is this, is the request for authorization to borrow funds for the loan at the special town meeting. And so with that, I will open it up to discussion questions from the board.
Before I have my members asking questions, Ms. Greenberg, would you please send that entire presentation to our office so that we can attach it to the minutes? I'm thinking muted yourself or we lost you, but I, I noticed that you went yes. Okay. Ms. Words, you have a question?
You're muted.
You're muted, Ms. Words.
They love me muted, except for when I am. So I have a question on, is Born's participation in this a set and solid thing?
Yes.
Yes, it's contractual.
It is. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Bessie?
Can you hear me out?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So I have a lot of questions, but I'm gonna, you know, I'm, I'm gonna, you know, throw straight to the punches. So there's a ton of information about what needs to be done, need to borrow money, talked about, you know, cost with zero percent interest, two percent interest. But there is nothing that talks about how this loan is expected to be repaid. What is it going to cost the taxpayers? And please don't tell me nothing.
No, it will cost.
Excuse me, one second. So I'm going to ask you to refine your question, Mr. Bessie, because I think this also a question is to, is it going to be the, the users, the septic, the users of the sewer plant? Or is it going to be town-wide? So I would ask that that question.
So, 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 okay, perfect. So it's a two-part question. Is, so with this, with this loan that would need to be acquired to make this happen? One, would it affect the entire town? With whatever, whether it be override or whatever you want to call it, or is this just specifically going to be targeted to the sewer users here in town?
Thank you.
This would typically cover or be funded by the users. If you were to go to townwide, it'd be a two and a half override. But in this case, it's the users as the enterprise fund and the sewer commission. And, excuse me, will officiate or determine what will be covered by the users themselves. And Mr. Foster and Mr. Sullivan have put their heads together and with the information and come up with an approximation of eighty to a hundred dollars per E D U. And one E D U is a residence.
Now, eighty, eighty to a hundred dollars in total or per billing cycle?
Per billing cycle.
So you're talking about, you know, two hundred, you know, let's just say about two hundred dollars per year in additional cost?
Yes.
I'm sorry, that's incorrect. It's eighty to a hundred dollars per annum. So you would split that up for the, for the payments. So figure eighty to a hundred dollars per year. There's two billing cycles. That's forty to fifty dollars per billing. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so it's per, so it's per year.
It was year, yeah.
Okay, so, so it could be, it could be a hundred bucks, best case scenario, eighty dollars per year. Okay. I think that's something that maybe in this whole presentation that, you know, might be important to notify the, the voters of what it's going to cost, because that's obviously going to be a, a big question. So I think it might be important to maybe wiggle a slide in there that can break that down a little bit so people can understand it when it's being proposed. wiggle a slide in there that can break that down a little bit so people can understand it when it's being proposed.
Thank you. Missy, any other questions, sir?
None of them.
Okay, Mr. Slaven.
Okay, I tell you right off the bat, nobody's going to be happy with me right now. Uh, the plant, which way in the beginning was fine, excellent, everybody highly rated, has got to the point where it's fully deteriorated. We are looking at probably having to build a second plant. I feel like this is just a program where the consultants, contractors just have a uh golden parachute to keep coming back with repairs and new things, but never really fix and finalize everything. I don't believe this thirty six million dollars is going to fix the issues overall. And I think in a year or less, we'll be coming back, looking at more stuff. And like I say, we have been to look at possibly a second facility. You know, it is extremely frustrating. There are some communities that hit the bullet and you're going to see this all through the Cape and every West community, so the West side of Buzzes Bay is going to have to step up and do some massive sewer or water pollution control facility work. And it's not just, you know, thirty or forty million dollars, it's hundreds of million dollars every community. Uh, it is not fair. We made a mistake way in the beginning what we did. But at this point here, it's time to say, you know, enough is enough. If we're going to do sewer work and continue because of the mess we're in, everybody has to pay. You can no longer sit there and put this on the backs of the people who have been sewer in the process of what the sewer put in was not adequate, was not maintained properly. I don't care what anyone wants to tell me. Most of these issues are because of our own lack of pe- keeping up with everything. And your sewer lines, the oil lines everywhere, they're going to fail at any time. How much money is that going to be? Is there a guarantee that this thirty six million dollars really is going to get the plant up and running properly? I don't believe so. I I'm not going to vote for any of this because I think it's time we stop the games and do it once and do it right, or we or we go back and everybody goes to a septic system. And nobody wants to hear it, but I'm fed up with all of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I may respond, Madam Chairman.
Um, I don't think you can respond to, you know, I'm no, Mr. Pigeon, thank you. Um, I'm gonna, I have some questions, but and I think maybe part of what I'm going to ask about will help help Mr. Slaven's comments. Um, first of all, can you explain the tier system? We're tier three. Does that mean we're the worst? Are there worse tiers? Are we the best tier? Do are we getting the best break with the zero to two percent, please, Ms. Greenberg or Mr. Drainville?
Yeah, Sarah lost her her bit, her uh audio.
Yeah, she's been having, she's been glitching.
So the tier three, you are the um, you're getting the most principal forgiveness as a tier three community. Um, so yeah, you, that's the, that's the hot, that's the most amount of uh principal forgiveness you can get.
Okay, and when is our wastewater management plan going to be done? Because I've been given several different dates over a period of time and I don't see the report.
It's it's scheduled to be uh being uh a draft form by the end of this year.
But if I go back to Ms. Greenberg's slide, isn't that part of what we needed on that slide that had yellow things? Isn't that, isn't that plan required in order to acquire our funding?
You need to have um, you need to have all of those conditions in place by the time you close on your loan, which is um after construction is done.
Well, our, we would have interim borrowings that we would be required to to take on.
The interim borrowing is done uh through the state and it's currently provided at at uh no interest.
Okay, so can I have the slide back where you showed? Um, you had a spread, you had four columns, I think, and it was thirty six million to forty four million dollars. I'd like to see that slide again, please. And Mr. Bessie did ask the question about the cost to the users, which is a per annum user. If we are looking only at the thirty six million dollars, and I'm guessing that's with the forgiveness, et cetera, Mr. Sullivan, am I correct in that? When you did the math, you backed out the born contribution and the forgiveness and the lowest rate, is that correct?
Yeah, um, nine point nine percent forgiveness, seventeen point one born. I think originally I did uh nine forgiveness and then eighteen born, but I just transpose those. Yeah, so that and then we use the number of this uh FY twenty fours uh budgeted interest, uh principal and interest payments. So just kind of keeping them steady. So we brought that out to, I believe it was FY twenty, I just updated on my spreadsheet, uh FY twenty six, so our current debt payments for non better debt are a little over one point seven million. New project debt would be about one point three four million and what we have on the books for debt on there for uh other debt outstanding is about seven hundred fifty two thousand, which would leave you the um, you know, a a shortfall coverage of about three hundred ninety four thousand. And uh on the nine nine thousand something, you know, ninety five or ninety eight hundred um EDU users, uh let me see, I can give you the, should be, well, nine thousand five hundred and eighty one. You, that would give you about uh forty one dollars and thirteen cents, but there's some other borrowing coming on board in the in the meantime, that's so that would be if you did did basically nothing else for borrowing. And so I'm hoping I explained that properly.
Uh, yes, could you explain the other borrowing that the sewer is committed to, please?
We've got the uh Narrows for um approximately six million. We had six million for some other engineering, but um the sewer commissioners were, did a good job of moving that over to uh to the retained earnings. And then uh we've got the uh the one for the Swift Beach that's out there outstanding for uh three million. So about nine million.
So nine million in total beyond, above and beyond, or before we even get to the thirty six million? That's correct.
Yeah, correct.
Okay, um, then I'm going to follow up on Mr. Slaven's comment. What is the expected cost? Not tomorrow, not next week, not, you know, this thirty six million dollars clarifier and headworks. What is the what are we looking at? Because we're not looking at just thirty six million dollars. Mr. Drainville or Ms. Greenberg?
Yeah, there are additional costs that are are coming in subsequent years. Um, they're being developed as part of the comprehensive planning project. Um, these two items that are part of this project are the most urgent. Um, and they're considering the future needs of the facility, um future flows that would be coming into the facility, growth of the town. Um, but the 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 costs are being developed as part of this plan.
So did you give me a dollar figure or not?
I I don't because we we don't, we don't have that yet. Um, we we developed the the cost for this because these are urgent needs uh for the facility and uh because the sewer department is trying to take advantage of, you know, special funding that's available now. So we're trying to take advantage of that. So they, this, these were pulled out for that reason.
So if I go back to Mr. Slaven's pointed comments, I believe there's a sewer plant on the Cape that was just recently completed at two hundred million dollars. Am I correct?
That's the estimated cost of it, the new one.
No, I'm talking about the one that was recently permitted in a and for a community on the Cape. I don't remember it. I don't think it's Dennis. I don't remember which one it is. Anybody?
I I don't know of a treatment facility alone. I mean, there's certainly treatment facility and searing that's 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 costly like that. Uh, not just a treatment facility alone, though. I'm not.
I'm talking about a wastewater facility.
Yeah, I I'm not aware of a of a treatment facility alone on the Cape that costs, that was that, that was costing that much. Those costs are our treatment facility and and searing projects that are going on.
Well, I guess for those of us who uh want to get to the to the nubs of this, um, can you wag? That's a wild.
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand. Um. I, it it's, you
That's a no, I take it.
Well, I'm 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 hesitant to throw numbers around without having a a good background. I mean, there was uh some thought that went into putting these together. Um, we're still developing the others and I hate to give a number and not not have a, not have something to back it up yet. Um.
Okay, and one more pointed comment from Mr. Slaven. How long have you been working on this project, sir? For the town, for the sewer commissioners?
This particular design or the comprehensive plan?
The comprehensive plan.
Uh, it started um in the fall of last year.
And just overall as consultants to the sewers commissioners?
Um, I'm sorry, I don't understand that question. How long have we been working with the town or?
Yes, that's correct. How long have you been working with the town?
Um. Maybe uh uh six, seven, seven or eight years.
Thank you. Mr. Bessie, you still have your hand up. Does that mean you have another question?
Uh, no, I'm sorry, I uh I forgot to put it down, but uh I think you're, you might be speaking to uh Orleans just had a
Thank you.
Had something recently completed.
And can you read the amount of money, please? Looking at the article?
The, there was an original thirty three point eight million dollars. Um, and then there was another eighteen um, almost nineteen million dollars uh for a new collection system. So right there, you're looking at fifty plus million. Uh, and I know there were some other costs that were associated. So even even not two hundred million, you know, it's at least double the cost of what we're talking about uh at a minimum uh for what's being proposed here for a new facility.
Any other questions from my board? Okay, um, Mr. Pigeon.
Yes.
Are you going to be or are is GHD going to be addressing items two, uh articles two, three, four and five?
Um, I I will do so based on uh the votes of my commission.
Okay. Uh, can we keep Ms. Greenberg and Mr. Drainville here in case we have questions? Please. Mr. Pigeon, can you explain Article Two, which is to rescind Article Fifteen on the?
Well, Article Fifteen of the uh annual screen uh was uh looking for three million for the replacement of Swift Beach sewer lines. And now we're voting to choose to rescind that article.
The what?
To rescind Article Fifteen. No longer necessary.
Now, I don't believe that's the correct terminology.
Madam Chairperson, if I could, I might
Mr. Sullivan, please.
I believe the sewer commissioners took votes and wanted part, we're looking for positive um action on number one and number five.
Correct.
The others we've chose to either pass over or withdraw.
Can you explain why number two has to be passed over or withdrawn? You can't withdraw an article. It's already on the warrant, but you can
Understood, under, and it was that just language that we talked about in the discussion. It was my understanding that the article is no longer necessary.
Because it is being replaced with an article that says to amend Article Fifteen, is that correct?
Yes.
What would be the effect of rescinding the article, Mr. Sullivan, please?
Uh, that would just remove the uh the funding for the Swift Beach for the additional lines down there. So it's just while we're doing the work and getting things done, I just, it wouldn't make sense. So before it was for the gravity pumps, now it would be relining um in essence. And as you're going a little further up and they're not so deep, uh, you know, we're hoping that especially the dewatering will will drastically go down.
Yeah, well, Kinko is being taken care of on another uh method and Article Fif Five replaces the original one, which included the grinder pumps and all, and is just handling the rest of Swift Beach area. With the relining and uh grade.
Okay, so Article Three is the engineering for Swift Beach and you believe that that is not necessary?
Correct, that is, that would be accomplished in Article Five.
Okay, and the transfer retained earnings article?
That was uh, we were enthusiastically thinking we needed to do that when uh we were originally planning for the special town meetings. And then as time went on, we left it in the request without realizing now we're in a different fiscal year. Everything is closed out in the previous fiscal year. So this is no longer, I wouldn't even say it's even legal.
Thank you.
Trying to transfer from a different fiscal year.
Okay, can you speak to Article Five then, sir?
Article Five covers the balance of what was requested for Swift Beach excluding Winko. There's still a couple houses left from Winko that will be involved in it, but this primarily is uh abandoning the failed gravity systems, replacing it with a closed system with grinding pumps and inserting to repair and or reline sewer lines and related structural equipment so that the approved article would now read, I move the town appropriates the sum of three million dollars to pay cost of a capital improvement project to repair and or reline sewer lines and related structural equipment to Winko, Murphy, Columbia, Barnes Pleasant and Baby Wav, including the payment of all costs, et cetera, et cetera. It is the same article to addressing the needs of Swift Beach excluding any reference to uh the fail, the gravity system, uh excuse me, the uh closed system and with grinder pumps.
Okay, so the total of the five articles is thirty nine million dollars, am I correct?
Yes.
Yeah, and now, Madam Chairperson, Article Five has already been approved. Now, it's under Article Fifteen, it is simply changing the methodology for which they, the fixing, if you will, is done.
Okay.
Already approved one. Um, and so, you know, that obligation's outstanding already, which recounted when we gave you the um nine million estimate for the Narrows and Swifts. So this wouldn't be on top of that.
Okay, I just want these numbers to be absolutely clear to the public. This is a, pardon me, hot topic. And there has been some confusion about what we are being asked to do and what the cost to the users is. And I very much want that information out there tonight, um because we have a town meeting on the twenty fourth and this is, this is a confusing um array of information and we need to make sure that all of us understand what we're voting on.
And I agree with you, Madam Chairman. And the comments you make this evening will certainly help clarify the language that's necessarily changed. Yes, most definitely.
Was that a pun, Mr. Pigeon?
Why, of course not.
Clarifiers and headworks? I'm sorry. Okay, any other questions from my board members? Yes, Mr. Bessie.
So just uh, I've just been reading some more stuff. What is the, what is the current capacity of of our uh of our sewer system or what are we currently using on a daily basis?
The system was currently, the syrup system itself was currently built to handle two point zero million gallons per day. We are, we are limited uh to one point five under uh restriction that is if we consistently pump approximately one point five, we would have to make a report to DEP. We're consist, we're concurrently pumping approximately one point two million gallons per day. But we're uh, we have a large savings account in the lagoons in that it uh has to catch up. The process is not going as efficiently as it once was. It's a fifty year old system.
Okay, so
Approximately one point processing, approximately about one point two million gallons per day.
So let me just jump in here, Mr. Bessie. So with these clarifier and headworks improvements, is that going to allow you to process more?
The clarifier will be a larger installation than currently exists. So it may be possible to pr- process more, but the overall system itself will not exceed two point zero million gallons per day.
Sorry, Mr. Bessie, go ahead.
No, that's okay. So so then I I guess I just want to put this into a little bit of perspective. Um, so the the new treatment facility that was just completed uh at the beginning of the year in Orleans uh was built to process three hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day. uh was built to process three hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day. And the rough end cost to produce that facility was a hundred and ten million dollars. So if we are producing one point two million gallons a day, I'm not saying that we're gonna triple the cost, but that could, cost could double. So you're now you're talking about, to Mr. Slavin's point, you know, two hundred million dollars to new facilities. So if thirty-six million dollars doesn't work, then what?
Uh, what do you characterize as doesn't work?
If the thirty-six million, if, if it, so let me clarify, if the thirty-six million dollars works for a year or two years or three years, then where do we go? Cause we've invested thirty-six million, and then if we fail and have to invest another hundred and fifty million. Look, where does that, where does that leave, you know, not the town, where does that leave the people that are gonna have to pay it, the sewer users like you and I and all the other voters of this town? Where does that leave us? Having to spend an extra thousand dollars a year on sewer because of the, the cost of, of a project? My concern here is that to, to Mr. Slavin's point is that, you know, we're putting up, we're putting a Band-Aid on a bullet hole. And we're gonna, we're gonna be in trouble sooner rather than later. You know, so why, why aren't we, you know, why are we not at least exploring the idea of what it would actually cost to put, as Mr. Slavin said, just do it? You know, we haven't, you know, why haven't we even thought of putting something together to say, hey, you know what? These are the options. We've got thirty-six million here, which is a, you know, which is a fix for now. And we've got a hundred and fifty million, which would be a fix for the next fifty years or sixty years or whatever it is. Um, why haven't we even just thought about that?
Okay, Mr. Drainville, can you answer that?
Yeah, so um so so the, the current facility that you have is around twenty years old. The, the mechanical equipment is around twenty years old and that's, that's the life expectancy of it. And so what this project does is it's, we're, we're looking to upgrade to of, say, six different components within the facility. It's not going to address all, all of the treatment components, but it's, it's, it's tackling two of the most urgent ones. So it's not intended to fix all of the problems. It is, it is a step in that direction of both upgrading to deal with equipment that has exceeded its life expectancy as well as accommodating for future growth within the town.
So in a, in a, in a sugar-coated way, it's gonna cost us more money in the near future because we're only touching two critical components. Now, we upgrade these critical components to make them operate efficiently. What's the effect of the components that are getting older? Because when you put new with old, the new always beats down the old and, you know, you fix one issue and then you gotta fix another one. So at the end of the day, it's thirty-six million today, but to my point, three, four, maybe five years down the road, is it another thirty-six, forty million dollars to pi- fix the next components that start to fail? You know, so it's, is it, it's cheaper today because we're gonna do thirty-six million dollars. So it's thirty-six million is a much better number to swallow than say a hundred and ten, a hundred and twenty, whatever, but is it really cheaper because we end up spending more? Because we have to go out and have more studies and new contractors and, you know, so my point is that are we really addressing the problem or are we just Band-Aid-ing it? And we're gonna come back to the voters again in three or four years and say we need another fifty million dollars because A and B components are now failing. So that's my concern is that, yeah, maybe we fix today. But we need to be thinking about the long-term effects and the long-term dollar to, at the end of the day, people like myself and, and other, you know, sewer users in town to how much more are we gonna have to spend in order to be able to just, you know, use everyday functions like water?
Mr. Drainville, can you answer that or not?
So, so there are additional costs that would be coming to address the other components. Um, we're, we're still trying to determine what is the most cost-effective manner to address those items. I will say that the current components that are part of this project um are causing um problems within the facility that are, you know, risking the permit of the plant. I mean, these facilities have a life to them. They, twenty years is a long time. And when, when some of this equipment is well over twenty years old, the cl- some of the clarifier equipment is well over twenty years old. Um, so it's, it's work that hasn't, wasn't addressed um in the prior upgrade. And so yes, there are more costs coming, but it's, it's um these are the most, we're, we're, we pulled this out of the plan, out of the planning project because of the urgency of, of addressing them. The other portions of the facility, they can go a little bit longer and we're looking at the more of what is gonna be needed to accommodate future flows. Um, but these are failing mechanisms, um and that's
Okay, so let's be specific for Mr. Bessie. You, you've identified the clarifiers and the headworks. What are the other things that need to be fixed? Not necessarily tomorrow morning or yesterday, but those things that you, that you, you say you pulled this out of the plan. So you have some plan. You may not have dollars attached to it, but you have identified the problem, so.
Yes, um, so we, uh, we have just recently finished upgrading um a process which is called the denitrification filters. That's, that's just about complete right now. This particular project is for two other processes. There are um aeration tanks and um disinfection. So there are a couple of other processes that are left uh to be addressed.
Um, so, so I, so it's me being, so saying that there are other costs that are coming is like, you know, me walking into a field of landmines and hoping that I don't step on one. Um, you know, these are the things that, you know, yeah, I'm being, I'm being blunt, but you know, when you're gonna sit in front of, you know, the voters that are gonna say yes or no. You know, they're gonna, they're gonna be doing the same exact thing. And I, I think I'm, I, I think I'm, you know, proving a point here that there's a lot of unknowns. And if I'm putting my money on the line, I don't want unknowns. I wanna know that if I'm putting my money on the line, it's gonna fix and address an issue and you're not gonna be coming back to me again. And, you know, in several years saying, hey, well, you know, that hundred dollars a, a year that we were asking for, now we're, it's really gonna be four hundred dollars a year or five hundred dollars a year. Those are the questions that the users are gonna wanna know and I don't see it. I don't see those answers. Um, I see the ask for thirty-six million. And then I hear, well, we don't know what the next phase is gonna cost. Um, and to me, for me to sit here and say, yes, I can support this, I wouldn't be doing a service to the community um by, you know, stamping and saying, yes, let's do this because it's great for today. I'm not a person for today. I'm a person for the future and, and where we're gonna be um holding ourselves in, in five or ten years. Uh, and right now, I don't think that anybody that I can ask these questions to can give me those answers. And if you can't give me those answers, how are you gonna give it to the voters that are, the ones that are ultimately gonna say yes or no?
Madam Chairman, if I may interject. Mr. Bessie, I've been there two months. And in evaluating all the possibilities and all of the needs of the plant and the collection system, I can't give you any answers. It is a huge problem. The whole place is fifty years old plus. This tanks, the clarifying tanks that we're uh go- going to be building, the ones that are currently there have never been emptied in fifty years. We don't know what they're gonna look like when we take one down and find able to examine the, whether it's watertight even. It's very frustrating because it's the only plant we have. There are no redundancies. And trying to find answers is very difficult because, as you point out, it doesn't cost a dollar, it costs two dollars. The project that we're currently on was uh seven, eight years ago, half the cost as they were asking because of inflation and the like. That's the reality. And as I'm frustrated as you are, Mr. Bessie, because there aren't any answers that can pop up that will be satisfy the needs of the town for one and make it at least reasonably acceptable for the users.
Okay, I'm gonna, um, Mr. Gibberdy, you had your hand up, um, Mr. Slavin, I see you, but I wanna make sure that Mr. Gibberdy who is a sewer commissioner, do you have something to add to this, Mr. Gibberdy?
I was just gonna say, in order to bring it kind of in somewhat of perspective, we've got an old, an old car that lost its brakes, needs to be fixed. And by the time we get them fixed, the gas tank's probably gonna fall off. So now what are we gonna do? Replace the gas tank or throw the car away? And unfortunately, that's way oversimplification of the problem that we have. This, I have to agree with Ron, this is a Band-Aid. I know it's a Band-Aid, but it's a long-term Band-Aid. It's one that's gonna be part of the plant ongoing. Uh, and the redesign, when we put in a new plant and add to it, that's part of it. The, hopefully, the way it's being designed at the present time, uh, it's gonna be looking forward to the future. Wareham's growing, needs the plant. Our main restriction of higher production out of that plant is what we can expel into the river. Now, until that gets addressed, and we've been trying to address that now for the last eight years. Uh, and that's like shoveling against the tide. The biggest, uh, the simplest way to address it would be to get the pipeline to the canal. Well, we know where that's going at the moment. But it's not a dead issue.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Gibberdy. I'm gonna, I'm gonna cut you off. We, we do have a lot still on our agenda. I don't wanna we've spent almost an hour on this so far. Mr. Slavin, again?
Okay. Plant basically was designed way back with the two thousand, yeah, two thousand modification. Was designed for a maximum output of two thousand gallons a day. We're restricted by EPA, et cetera, to fifteen, you know, one point five million gallons a day. So no matter what we fix and clean, we still have that restriction which we've been waiting for years to see if we can pick up some more. Uh, with the things we're fixing, there's no guarantee that we basically gonna bang up against the one point five and can't do anything anyways. You've got parts of, you, you know, you're talking about fixing a piece of the plant. The whole plant basically virtually needs to be ironed out all the way through it. You have internal problems in the plant, you have external problems in the plant, you have external problems with the sewer pipes coming into the plant. You know, we need to be realistic and understand what we're looking at. I'm not happy that we have a system that is gonna cost us millions of dollars. I mean, we were talking about the canal project using Wareham's plant. You know, basically taking sewer from Marion, Metaboys, South Plymouth, Wareham and Powderborne. We could never do that with the plant, the condition it's in. It would never work. And that was a hundred and forty to a hundred eighty million dollar project, people. God knows what it is now with the increases. You know, I'm, I'm frustrated because we put uh pipes in the ground that were below the water line, stayed below the water line, which were guaranteed to fail, and we kept using the same consultant time after time, not learning our lesson. This is a different consultant, but the bottom line is we're not fixing the issue and recognizing. We're not sitting down saying is this fair for the individual sewer user to have to pay for when in theory it's supposed to benefit the whole town? These are hard decisions. I mean, I, I don't think any selectman is gonna sit there and tell every resident in town, you're gonna all have to pay because you probably won't get re-elected again. But the simple fact of the matter is you have to recognize this is an issue and it's time to step up and basically get off the toilet. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wertz?
Yeah, I, I'm gonna speak both as a citizen and as a select board member. I um am paying a lien off now, that's for fifteen years, when I was forced by the town to put sewage in and the town people stood there and watched my septic system to be closed up and filled up. And I have that lien already. Now, as a citizen, I'm going to want to know ultimately what the aggregate lien for a total repair is going to have to be. I am not going to want to hear every year and a half that there's another lien and another lien and another lien. We have to look at designing a solution for the city, for the, for the town. Not just for the people who happen to have sewage today, but what's gonna happen as the town grows. And we need a realistic plan that isn't just Band-Aids. We have to be able to understand the poison we have to drink and know how to drink it. And that's, we've gotta stop fooling around with this thing.
Okay, we've been at this for oh, about an hour, so I'm going to um cut the questions from the board or comments from the board off. Mr. Pigeon, do you have anything else that you'd like to say to us on Articles One through Five on the special town meeting?
I can just assure you that we're all trying to do the best we can and to try and solve our problems within reason. Uh, we all have a pocketbook. When no one has one Powerball. And so we're all in the same
Say this.
Situation in which we try to pay our bills at the end of every month. And we all encounter the same difficulties, there's just, isn't enough money. But I can assure you that the commissioners, every one of us is trying to figure things out and in conjunction with our consultants, trying to do it the best way possible for the town. Thank you.
Thank you. But somebody's still got a mic open. Mr. Sullivan, do you wanna add anything, sir? No, okay. Um, then I'm going to excuse Mr. Gibberdy, Mr. Pigeon, Ms. Greenberg and Mr. Drainville. Thank you very much. Um, and we will be voting on these articles later on in the agenda. Good night.
Thank you.
Um, Ms. Wertz? Eight B, please, may I? Well, first of all, um, let me explain what this is. In order for the um borrowing that we need to do for the um life of the boat that is being purchased for Department of Natural Resources, we need to state a life expectancy of the loan and the maximum useful life, and that would be ten years. The document has been submitted to you so that you can review it. You've all heard the reasons that we have to um in- increase what we were going to pay for the vessel. So Ms. Wertz is gonna make a motion to authorize the clerk herself to sign the document regarding the maximum life of the vessel for the borrowing documents so that we can complete the va- ball, borrowing documents. Ms. Wertz?
I make a motion that we vote to authorize the clerk of the select board to sign document, a document regarding the maximum life of a vessel for the borrowing documents.
Motion made and seconded. Any other questions? No? Okay, I'll go for a roll call vote. Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie? Can't hear you.
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Man, myself, yes. Thank you, Ms. Wertz. Um, the next one, Mr. Mr. Sullivan, would you explain the next, please? Discussion and possible vote regarding the municipal relief year-end transfers, please?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
It's, um, those are our year-end transfers that we do every year that are allowed through municipal relief. Uh, we just have uh three all told, and they're trying to pull up what uh
One is two hundred thousand, one is eight thousand, and the third, oh, no, it's only two, two hundred thousand
Yep. So the first one is for the water pollution control facility. That is for the salaries, two hundred thousand to the expenses. Uh, salaries, as you know, they've had the difficult time keeping, keeping people. Uh, you know, it's been, uh, we, we've been increasing pay and such, but it's a, uh, it's a job that is quite in demand. So we've had a surplus and uh the money is going towards the expenses for the project. That previous nine million dollar project that was uh, that was voted. So that's to offset, there is a one point one million portion coming from the non-borrowing. And you'll see some more of that going into the uh next fiscal year. The other one is taking funds from the health insurance line, which has a surplus, eight thousand to legal expenses. That, that is not, as you know, Mr. Bowen is a flat fee. We do have separate labor council which is Emerson, and that can go from collective bargaining to investigations to a lot of different matters and going to uh mediations and other, other such things. Uh, and the last one, this one is, uh, this one's more annoying than anything, so excuse my frustration with it. Uh, we're gonna take from health insurance nine hundred and fifty dollars to the, uh, FICA line, which is the, the federal, uh, tax we pay or Medicare tax that we pay as, uh, employers. And we were, we had, we had five hundred and eighty-five thousand available, and we're, you know, approximately nine hundred and forty some odd dollars, so we'll transfer nine hundred and fifty dollars. And that's because of some of the employees, their payouts that they've had that have left. Um, there's taxes on that, obviously, and some of the retros and raises, and you can't pay the FICA tax through, uh, the retro salaries, so, uh,
Yeah, where's that nine fifty coming from, Mr. Sullivan?
Health insurance.
Okay, and going to?
FICA.
FICA, okay, cuz I don't have that document coming.
Miss, Miss Lazon, uh, alerted me today about that.
Oh, okay, thanks very much. Um, then we will need that document for our signature for tomorrow, cuz we didn't, yeah.
It will be, it will be available and, uh, and I can email it over, too.
Okay, thanks. Any further questions of Mr. Sullivan about those three transfers? Ms. Wertz, um, you would, would you make a motion, please?
Yep, I make a motion that we vote to approve the munis- the municipal relief year-end transfers.
Motion made and seconded as presented by Mr. Sullivan. Any further questions on the motion? Hearing none, I will go roll call vote. Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
And myself, yes. They are done. Okay. Um, we have a couple of policy que- um, discussions coming up. The first one is regarding naming policy for public property. This is an amendment to what we have on the books. Um, and what I did was, I gave you information from several other towns that have naming policies, and I gave you our, um, old one that was in nine, two thousand nine. Um, and what it really comes down to is that we do not have the manpower, the municipal maintenance power. We don't have the ability to maintain what we have. And so this policy that I'm suggesting we adopt, and, you know, makes it plain that we understand the importance of naming facilities, whether it's benches or trees or squares or any part of town property. Um, but in order to help keep our fiscal responsibility in check, um, I'm suggesting that we adopt the policy that directs the town administrator, because of course town property falls under his aegis, but that we can give him a direction to allow no further facilities or objects to be placed on town property under this policy. Any questions on that? Okay, may I have a motion, Ms. Wertz?
We have a hand from Alan.
Oh, I'm sorry, Alan. Mr. Slavin?
Uh, I went back and looked because we got a couple of emails questioning, uh, you know, benches, whatever. I thought the municipal maintenance had come back to us several years ago stating that they really were not in favor of increasing any more benches, particularly with Austin at the time. Uh, there are some other areas where we have beaches, but if we have, uh, abnormal high tide, those benches are gonna get wiped out or washed over, et cetera. Uh, and I, I think it's time we just kinda put a moratorium on all this until we figure out what municipal maintenance can handle, because we can't put, keep putting, you know, stress on them to do stuff when they're shorthanded. And their job isn't getting to be less, it's getting to be more. It, it never becomes less. So at this point, we should do, we should restrict what we do.
I did talk with Mr. Menard, and I asked him point blank whether he had the ability, the manpower, woman power, people power, to maintain what we have, and it's a stretch, as you know, because that department is substantially lower than it was in terms of numbers of bodies as it was years ago. Any other questions or comments?
Just his comment was to me originally way back was, I don't have the manpower to do it. You know, if you keep adding things to me, I can't do it. It's not that he doesn't want it, we just can't do it.
Okay, so we have a motion to?
Chair, just before you go through, there's, um, and I was, no, I was gonna speak to it later, but as you know, with the, um, William Gregorman Band Show, we are replacing the seating approximately a hundred and, uh, six, uh, seats. Uh, we will be, there were names on there before, just so people understand. We will be taking those boards off and allow them for the, uh, for the families to take them, the boards that were on there that were named before. The new benches have, uh, you will have the ability to have four slats that can have names on them. Um, so we will be seeking some, that's to help with some of the funding along the way for that. And some, if they wanna pay for the whole thing, they can put one name on there and take the, the whole bench. So I'm assuming since this is something we've already been putting forward and was a site that already had these, we're, we're moving, we're gonna do that still. Is there any problem with that from anybody?
No, Mr. Sullivan, I think I talked with you about that, because that has, it's a project that you've had in the works for a couple of years. It's an ongoing upgrading of the Gregorman Band Show.
Yeah, no more, no more splitters in my butt anymore.
In the next, uh, week or so, we plan to release those, those plans for those benches as well. So it's, uh, it's kinda neat because you can, like I said, you can do, I was gonna do it through the TA report. You can do all four of the slats on the back, so it allows a lot more people to be involved and have, uh, have, uh, some, some piece of onset.
Excellent. Ms. Wertz, can I have a motion, please?
I make a motion that we vote to a- adopt policy number twenty, twenty-three dash five regarding public property, buildings and facilities naming policy.
And understand that this is revised as of today. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yeah.
And myself, yes, it is adopted immediately. And, um, the second one, the policy to add the Corey Sory check on our volunteers. As you know, all of our volunteers are required to do the ethics training, the open meeting law training, the sexual harassment policy, and read it and, and, um, sign that they understand it. And because our Council on Aging, um, members have, be, deal with a vulnerable population, uh, they were asked several months ago if they would agree to sign, um, have Corey and Sory, um, background checks done on them. So all of the sitting members on the Council on Aging have complied with all of those regulations. And we were doing it, we just didn't have that written down. So I'd like a motion to add that one sentence, please, Ms. Wertz?
I make a motion that we vote to amend the volunteer policy number twenty twenty-three dash oh-three to read, volunteers to the Council on Aging shall also be required to have a Corey Sory check before being sworn in as they deal with vulnerable population.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I'll go for a roll call vote. Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Excellent. Next, Ms. Wertz, we have, um, some opt-out and reduction fees, please. Item F.
Yeah, I make a motion to vote to approve the opt-out reduction fees applications for curbside billing, FY twenty-three in the amount of nine hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion on that? We get these from time to time. Hearing none, I'll go for a roll call vote. Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Slavin?
Yeah.
And myself, yes. I forgot to say this, but, you know, for people who want to memorialize somebody, we have some really great places that people could donate money. Our schools give out several hundred thousand dollars worth of scholarships every year. And even five hundred bucks would help a college student to, you know, pay for books, so. Thank you. Um, Ms. Wertz? The item G, I'm not going to close the hearing at the moment. Mr. DeJesus, the application from thirty-eighty-two Cranberry Highway. We opened that hearing, he didn't have the documents, and so we recessed it so that he wouldn't have to reapply and pay for the advertising, et cetera. Um, I had been advised by his attorney that he has withdrawn that application, and he will be moving all of the vehicles that he has parked. Um, I'll call it the Old Salvation, the old yellow motel next to the Old Salvation Army building. They will be gone from that property, um, on or before the fifteenth of this month. Um, they have been parked there outside of his permit, and we have been trying to work with him to bring that in line. So I'm gonna ask that we hold off on closing the hearing until we actually make sure that that's been done. Ms. Wertz? Um, item H. We had, we have the Onset Bay Association and other, um, entities in our town who provide a lot of service and a lot of joy and a lot of entertainment for the town. Last week's, uh, concert was wonderful, except that the aftermath was really dreadful in terms of the trash and the litter and all of that. Um, it's unreasonable to expect the town municipal maintenance workers to be able to keep up with that kind of, I think there were something like fifteen hundred people at that concert. Um, so, I, I think we need to think about if there are large crowds expected, the sponsor of the, of the event needs to provide for additional trash pickup. I just think that's reasonable. Mr. Slavin, you're nodding your head?
Yeah, uh, normally the OBA, uh, has staff that goes around all during the concert. I think one or two of the members that do it were out ill. I think that's why it happened, plus the fact you've got July fourth, fifth, whatever, and you have the residual for a lot more people than normal. And, um, hate to say it, but there are a lot of people out there that are simply slobs. They don't care.
Then Chairperson, I'm sorry to interrupt. I know that, um, that, uh, Ms. Jones, I think that was the biggest concert turnout that they've had. We, we, they, they always put on a great show, everything that they have going on there. But that was by far, that was getting into festival size when you, when you think about, um, things. So I, that was highly unusual. Uh, we do have some of the big bellies. We've gone through a maintenance routine of them, and some of them, we do need new, some new motherboards in as well, so they're not compacting like they, they were before. We've got the PO going on that, but they, uh, you know, of course, uh, timing, we, uh, we had them done a couple of weeks ago, and they, they discovered the, some of the issues. So, uh, hoping that can help offset it. Uh, you know, obviously, the OBA doesn't amazing things. I just signed off on a couple more of their events, uh, coming up. So it's, uh, I know that they, they work hard and do a lot of things for the, for the community, so.
They do.
Yeah, I'm not ma- meaning to criticize them in any way. I know that the Oyster Fest provided additional trash receptacles above and beyond the, um, the squishy machines, whatever, there's a, the compacting things that are on Main Street. I just think that when we permit things that we need to think about the extra stress that we are putting on our municipal services, that's really what I want to bring to our attention this evening. Any other discussion on that portion?
No, just that, just to let people know, that concert was probably three times the max number they usually have. That's just way too many people to handle with the staff they have. You know, so we just try and find a way to help them as well.
Yeah. Excellent. Um, Ms. Wertz, I'm gonna accept a motion from you on I, which is the confirmatory vote, please? I move to confirm the vote taken on?
I move to confirm the vote to authorize the chair to sign a letter regarding Buzzards Bay Coalition Grant. That's not the one. H is the one about the trash.
That's, yeah, no, I'm looking for I, so the commu- for the letter that we authorized under forty-eight hour business last week, so. That's, that's what you?
Okay, so, yes, so what I wanna be sure on is we've had a discussion on, um, special events, removal of excess trash. We're not gonna-
Yeah, no, we're not gonna do anything on that, yeah.
That's what I wanna, yeah, make sure is clear.
Yep.
Okay, I make a motion to vote to authorize the chair to sign the letter regarding Buzzards Bay Coalition Grant, which was originally, uh, presented at our last meeting on six twenty-seven twenty-three.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to con- confirm the vote that was already, uh, taken last week, taken up under forty-eight hour business. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I will go for a con- a roll call vote. Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Epstein.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Four zero one, thank you. The next is possible vote on those articles that we heard an hour-long presentation on.
So, so I have in front of us, um, Article One, Construction Cost for WPCF Projects Clarifier and Headworks Upgrades. We need to determine whether we vote to recommend favorable action.
So in order for us to take a vote, you need to make a motion for favorable action. We can vote it down, so may I have a motion? That's, this is the thirty-six million dollar one, just for-
I make a motion for favorable action on Article One, Construction Cost for WPCF Projects Clarifier and Headworks Upgrade.
There's a second to that, please?
I'll second the motion.
Motion made and seconded for favorable action on that. Any further discussion on the motion? Going to go for a roll call vote. Ms. Wertz?
I'm gonna say yes.
Mr. Bessie?
No.
Mr. Chadwick?
No.
Mr. Slavin?
Oh, no.
I will vote yes. It, so our vote is two, three, zero for favorable action. Ms. Wertz, I will accept a motion on Article Two, which is to rescind, and we know that that's, it's not a good idea.
I make a ma- a motion to recommend favorable action on Article Two, rescind Article Fifteen, twenty-twenty-two Spring Town Meeting.
Second, please. Motion made and seconded. This is the one that we, that has been replaced by Article Five. Any further discussion on the motion? Um, I'm going to go for a roll call vote. Ms. Wertz?
No.
Mr. Bessie?
No.
Mr. Chadwick?
No.
Mr. Slavin?
No.
And myself, no. So that is zero, five, zero. Item number three, Ms. Wertz, please?
I make, uh, motion to recommend favorable action on Article Number Three, Engineering Plan Swift Speech Sewer Lines Into Ruggles Pump Station.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to recommend favorable action. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll go for a roll call vote. Ms. Wertz?
No.
Mr. Bessie?
No.
Mr. Chadwick?
No.
Mr. Slavin?
Quick question, is that the one, are they gonna pass over that?
Yeah.
Then I'm just gonna let them think they're gonna pass over.
Okay, so we are zero, four, one. I, cuz I say no. Um, Ms. Wertz, number four, which is the illegal one, you can't do it anyway?
I make a motion to recommend favorable action on Article Four, Transfer of Retained Earnings.
Is there any further discussion? I may have a second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to recommend favorable action. Any further discussion? I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Wertz? Oh, did you?
No.
Good. Mr. Bessie?
No.
Mr. Chadwick?
No.
Mr. Slavin?
Epstein again, cuz it's gonna be passed over.
Okay, and I will vote no, so it's zero, four, one, and then Article Five, which is the-
When we do this, we'll probably see if the moderator will allow a consent agenda to pass over to three and four, so if there is a call for the vote of selectmen, um, there may just need to be an explanation that you were voting against the article itself, not the consent agenda.
Correct. Um, I can do that at the meeting that we will have before the town meeting. We will be meeting at six thirty on the twenty-fourth. So if she'll accept a consent agenda, then we will revote it for clarification.
Perfect, okay.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Wertz?
I make a motion to recommend favorable action on Article Five, amend Article Fifteen, twenty-twenty-two Spring Town Meeting.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to recommend favorable action. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I will go for roll call. Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven.
Uh, there's no mention of an engineer in this particular piece, so I'm gonna abstain.
And I will say yes, so it is four, zero, one. Thank you.
Yeah, um, just so you'd clarify, if you look in the, from the original one, it was all um, all costs associated, related there to. Which concludes engineering.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, Mr. Sullivan, your report, please.
Um, I did give you, I was on away last week, thank you for um, mostly leaving me alone. Um.
You're welcome.
That's for Mr. Slaven, wasn't it, Mr. Slaven?
No.
Okay, I'm not telling any tales. Um, but the, uh, we went over the Big Belly Solar Trash Compactor, so we're getting those. Um, fixing up and running, and also the panels that were damaged down on Main Street. And then uh, expect within the next week or two to have the uh, Lily, Lily and Gregorman Band Show. Information out for the, for the commemorative benches, so.
That's it.
Other than that, we enjoyed the rain.
Okay, awesome. Um. Leas on initiative reports and boards comments, I remind you that it's now a nine eleven, we still have an executive session to go into. So I would ask you to keep it short. Ms. Wertz.
Uh, met with the uh. Affordable Housing Trust today and we're starting to put out some a- applications, acquiring applications and approving them for distributing funds.
Excellent, thank you. Mr. Bessie.
Nah.
Mr. Chadwick. Mr. Slaven.
Uh, real simple, uh, the Gaitman invited us to come to the meeting, they have a baseball game last Friday. Usually every time I come, they lose. Uh, surprise, they actually won. Uh, and uh, it was a nice, it was a nice time, you know, as simple as that. And uh, people really should go to the games, they, they have a really good team. That's it, kids.
Thanks. They also have a great um, youth program for kids and they've been traveling around to local towns to, you know, do their camps. Really is a nice um, operation. Okay, Ms. Wertz, I'm gonna accept a motion from you on Article eleven B. Which is a whole bunch of minutes.
And do, can we handle them in one motion?
Yes, you can.
Hey, I make an emotion to approve the meeting minutes for March twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three, April twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three. April twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-three, May second, twenty-twenty-three, May sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three, May thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. And June sixth, twenty-twenty-three.
Second.
May seconded to approve those minutes, may. Any further discussion?
Everybody was there.
What?
Everybody was present?
Um, yeah, but we're accepting them, so it doesn't. It doesn't matter, yes. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, Ms. Wertz.
Yes.
Mr. Bessie.
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick.
Yes.
Mr. Slaven.
Yes.
And myself, yes, they are approved, okay. Um. We are going to be going into executive session and we will be. Um. Dismiss, adjourning from the executive session. So I'd like a motion to go into executive session. We will take a five-minute recess while WCTV and the staff. Um, closes the meeting out to everyone. We are expecting Ms. Alan England, who is here. Noah, would you let Ms. Dorian Allen England in, please? She's four down on the list. Ms. Wertz, I'll accept the motion while we're doing that.
I make the motion that we um. Open an executive session. That's what my motion is.
For reason number three.
For reason number, to discuss the lit- litigation of Joseph Edwards versus Town of Wareham.
And I declare that we must do this in executive session to protect the town's position. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Motion made in seconded to go into executive session for reason number three. I will do a roll call vote, Ms. Wertz.
Yes.
Mr. Bessie.
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick.
Yes.
Mr. Slaven.
Uh, don't we need to mention the Wareham versus AD make?
We're not doing that, sir.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, yes.
Thank you and myself, yes. We are in executive session and we will be back at nine. Can you do a three-minute recess? We'll do a five-minute, nine. Try for nine eighteen, okay? You are recessed.
Time to go pee.